Welcome to this work session meetings of the Cimman Council. All work session items. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not divided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on a agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Our order of business on our work session tonight is weed abatement.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to try to work through this. I apologize for my voice. Tonight, we wanted to make sure that the council understood what's happening with weed abatement. We wanted to make sure that you knew who was handling weed abatement and that you were comfortable with the policies that the council has passed, that we are enforcing, and that we wanted to make sure also that if there was tweaks to the policy or issues that we kind of got feedback, or we were just going to continue the weed program like we are. So, we've got a lot of weeds this year, so this is a perfect topic for tonight. So, Mr. Eaton is going to, Chief Eaton, sorry, is going to walk you through what we're doing.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. So, as Manager Foggan has indicated, that we've been asked to kind of give you a guideline of what we do with weeds. We've made some changes to our weed program, kind of go over some of that stuff, and kind of just get a little guidance as to where we're at with it. So, historically, weed abatement has been very confusing. It's been very confusing for the employees. It's been very confusing for the citizens. At one time, for many years, green weeds and brown weeds were split up. Green weeds were handled by Neighborhood Services. Brown weeds, because they were more of a fire hazard, were handled by the Fire Department. We felt, like you do too, I'm sure, is it's just too confusing. Who gets the complaint? Who doesn't get the complaint? So, we had put together a committee, started with some of the complaint processes that you'll see probably later on in a work session, as far as the complaint process, the guiding of emails to the proper places where these complaints need to go. So, we'll cover that in another work session, but tonight, we'll just kind of cover it. So, what we've done, what we decided during this, these meetings with the other departments, is that the weeds need to be with one person. And so, we decided that Building Life Safety would handle the weeds. We divvied up some other things that other departments did, and come to a really good conclusion on who does what. So, I did not get a chance to change into Fire Department clothes, and I thought that was okay now because weeds actually, they demand a little nicer dress presence. So, I want to go over a little bit. So, the complaint process right now. The customer complaint is initiated. So, we work on a proactive and a reactive. So, we're reactive to the complaints that come in. We also work Neighborhood Services. We plan on changing to a more proactive. So, where any of our staff members are out driving around, they see some weeds and that kind of thing, and that meet those classifications, that we will start that process. Obviously, it's always our goal to give voluntary compliance without going into any other court steps. We like to work with people to get those kind of things done. So, when we get a complaint that comes in through the phone, through the city, through our email, or whatever it is, then we send somebody out to physically identify the complaint, write it up. We come back in, we check it out. If it is not a homeowner, or if it is an abandoned home, we come back and we get the idea of, or we find out who it was, county records, and we make contact there. If it is a homeowner, we will actually go up and talk to them, and talk to them about their weeds. And one thing that we've found, and Chief DeVries can agree with, I'm sure agree with me, is that I think a lot of citizens don't know the areas that they're supposed to take care of. Alleyways, it's their responsibility to take care of their half of the alleyways, even outside of their fence. And I just think that people don't know. And so, part of our, part of this process is a very aggressive ad campaign or campaign through social media, and I'll be working to get that done, just to give people that idea of, that information that they need. When we do make contact with the property owner, we obviously, again, seek voluntary compliance in a timeline. Presently, the timeline is 30 days. What we find with that is that by the time you go through any kind of court process or anything else, the weeds are now brown and possibly fallen over, and it's really, you know, it goes outside of the immediate attention that it needs. Worked with Carl and his staff, we're actually closing that gap to seven days, trying to get that compliance earlier, much earlier than the 30 days. And most, all of these violations and everything that we do is driven by the ordinances that are adopted by the city and City Council. After seven days, we go back and we'll check the status to see if the weed violation is better. If it's better and they're still working on it, we'll still work with the citizens to give them a little more time and that kind of thing. If we see that nothing's been done, which happens often, that citizens just don't do it for one reason or another, we've developed a new weed violation notice. Again, still using the present ordinances. There's no new ordinances adopted for this. It's the present weed ordinances, which basically, this is the first step in the legal process of the written notices. This is a picture of it here. Basically, we've worked with the city attorney's office with all of the information that's needed to move forward. So, on the date required, we will check the status, document with photos. If they are compliant, then no further action is required. If the property is not compliant, we take that form that we just have, we send it off to the city attorney's office to begin charges or civil abatement on that. With that, the city attorney processed the violation through the municipal court as a criminal complaint or a civil abatement. And Mr. Cooper, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe that at that time, the city attorney's office makes a determination whether it will be a civil abatement or a criminal complaint.
Yeah. Once we receive the complaint, it just sort of depends on prior histories, the severity of the violation, what goes on. And just briefly, a civil abatement is where we go through a process, get a court order that allows us to enter upon the property and actually clean up the weeds, basically issue a bill against the property owner and do a lien on the property, which can be done pretty quickly overall. We can get that knocked out in 30 days, maybe 60 at the most. The criminal complaint, that's where you actually start a criminal complaint process. Part of that process could take, that can take up to four to six months. And part of that process is you try and seek terms in any kind of plea agreement or conviction that require the cleaning up of the property, the suspension of fines, or something along that line. So, sometimes what we'll do is we'll say we issue a $500 fine, but all of it suspended if you get the property cleaned up. So, that's kind of briefly how that works. The civil abatement is much quicker. It just sort of, like I say, again, it just sort of depends on how things look, so.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. So, just a little bit to fill you in on the municipal court actions, and I think that it's, sometimes we get comments from the public that it's, "They're weeds, and you're going to take me to court over weeds." And I get it. I agree, but it's also been this council's priority, this city manager's priority, along with previous council, those of you that was on previous council, is to clean the city up. And while it seems very harsh, it just, sometimes, if we can't get complacency, then we have to move to those kind of thing. So, the judge will actually hear the case. We actually are, one of our officers or one of our fire prevention people go and testify with myself or anybody else, prevent or present any pictures or anything that we've got. So, the civil violation is what Carl was just talking about, where that we'll actually, we'll actually do the abatement ourselves. We'll bring it back to you guys under our budgets to do those abatements, do it, and then we tag the tax rolls or that property with that. The criminal charges, the judge charges responsibility party for criminal charges per our city code. And I think that, Carl, and I, if you could add, as far as violations, fines and that kind of thing, and I think you just covered it just a little bit with fines, probation, those kinds of things.
Yeah. Things underneath our city code allow for certain punishments depending on the type of charge it is, and I believe it's a class one misdemeanor per the city code, which is the maximum misdemeanor. This isn't going to happen, but technically, yeah, you could get six months jail. We're not putting somebody in jail for weeds, but it's just one of those things. But ultimately, it could be a $2,500 fine. You get probation for three years. Again, that's not going to happen. You're looking at generally a minimum amount of time just to make sure that the process is taken care of. And if there's a fine, we generally try to suspend it as a hammer over their head to say, "If you don't clean it up, then you're going to have to pay $500 and still clean up the property." So, we, it's not as draconian as it could be, and like I say, we don't like getting where we get, and the folks on the ground do a lot to try and talk these people into complying, and ultimately, it's their choice. They don't want to comply. They know what's coming, so.
And it is our goal, and customer service obviously is top of our priorities as well. And we're going to get, and we do get citizens, maybe citizens that don't have the means, or citizens that can't get out there because of any physical issues, or they can't do that, and we try to work with them. This is not a, you know, we don't want, we don't want to find people, get them into court over weeds. However, we need to get some stuff cleaned up. A lot of the issues that we have, and as you guys know, is the empty lots. Coming into town, some different empty lots and those kind of thing, and those take a little bit different approach when we find the owners, and then we still, we kind of immediately go into the court process on that instead of giving them, because if they're out of town owners, they're not going to come within their seven days and take care of that stuff. So, more than anything, I think that's the little more harsher things that we do there. The civil abatement is that we will remove the weeds by a private contractor. We'll go through our process through finance as far as getting prices and when that's required. Private contractor, we do different statements for courts, including a cost of 5% for administrative charge. The responsible party, the people that we've got in court, they'll be provided with that statement of account. And then we have certain time periods that we have to get this stuff done per state ARS. That was kind of a quick deal. I'll just give you a little bit of a background. So, once we do start the process a little heavier, a little more proactive, our intent is to kind of start with the main entrances into the city, trying to clean up, obviously working with ADOT in some of the areas, and some of the city areas. Some of the areas that we get complaints on are actually city-owned properties, and so, and we know that, and of course, we also know the staff levels of planning with Public Works and whatever, trying to get that stuff done too. Once we roll this out, our goal is to make it as transparent as possible with people trying to work with them. But with any kind of new rules or change rules or rules, there's a chance that we're going to get some pushbacks. And more than anything, and Manager Foggan and I have discussed this, more than anything, we wanted to make sure you guys are ready and aware of when this is what's happening out there, and we want to, you know, I would like your thoughts, processes that you would like to see. If there's any other questions that you have for us. It was kind of brief, but it's kind of where we're at.
Are there any other questions? A lot of the comments that I get in the public, it seems like the perception is definitely that it's on the city to go out and check all the areas and be in charge of this, but I think what I'm hearing you say is that it's really, a lot of it is on calling and making a complaint to start the process. So, if you have a neighbor or something that has a mess in their yard, and it's bringing down the value of the neighborhood, it's on the neighbors to make that call. Is that right?
Well, it is, and it's, and I hate to say squeaky wheel kind of thing because it's not the way we work. We get right on it. But part of this process, and part of the new complaint process that IT has been working with, Officer Reeve, with Neighborhood Services have been working on, is going to fix a whole lot of problems for the citizens, that they, if they know, and I won't go into too much detail, but if they know there's a weed complaint, they push weed complaint, they tell where the weed complaint's at, they take a picture if they've got one, and it's routed to me. If there's potholes, they take a picture, where's it at? It gets routed automatically. So, the public doesn't have to be calling in and being rerouted, rerouted to everybody. So, well, that's not what we do. One of the other things that we do with that is that our dispatch center receives a lot of those complaints, and we have created, mostly Dave Reeve with PD, created a kind of a flip chart that shows who's in charge of what, so we can also, you know, safely guide folks where they need to be going. And so, certainly, being reactive as soon as we get those complaints is super important. The proactive part is that we've got staff that's all over the city all day long, every day, and so, we can immediately start some of those cases. But yeah, if, we get a few daily lately from neighbors that, you know, that just get tired of looking at their neighbor's stuff, so yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So, did I hear you say that you're going to do some kind of informational piece or educational piece to the public? Kind of inform what you're responsible for.
Yes, yep. So, our wonderful videographer in the video department, so she's been gone for, back and forth with some other busy stuff, so actually, starting next week, we'll actually be working together with Public Works, PD, doing a video series like we like to do, so yeah.
I think that was how it's law, because people don't know that, oh, I'm responsible for half the alley behind me. That wasn't fair. I did.
Right. Well, and we realize that people just don't know. There's another document that's going to be created that we were kind of using the type from another city that actually has a picture of a house, and these are the things that you're responsible for. And I truly believe that 75% of the people out there that are having issues or we're talking with them, they just don't know that they had to do that, and I think that that's... What's that? I'm sorry?
They're draining their drainage area.
Yes.
Wash it.
Well, they are, and they do, and we get that, and I won't speak for Public Works, but I'm sure that Rob and Jack will tell you that there's a lot of complaints that people think that we need to be cleaning that stuff up when it's indeed their area. So, yeah. But the information is the big part, trying to get that out there.
Any other questions? Comments? Yes.
Keith, thanks again for the report. We appreciate the information. Do you already have service groups calling in, looking for, you know, things to do? I mean, something like this would be perfect for youth groups to clean up areas and...
It absolutely would. So, what the thought process is, is just carry on what Neighborhood Services has done and try to contact some other groups or something. There's more than one occasion that we have some folks that just can't do it themselves. They can't get out for a number of reasons and do it themselves, and we try to hook them up with groups that can. I would urge any group that would be able to volunteer or want to volunteer for these things to contact me or contact the city, so we can put them on a list and kind of help through that way. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Want to turn over people's heads up?
Pardon. This is not a time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, folks.
Next hour of business is Mayor Termink discussion. Commissioner Foggan.
Yes, yes, Mayor. I apologize for my voice. So, we'll turn it over to Sid.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council, and I didn't realize Keith and I were going to match our presentations tonight, but at least we're consistent. This is going to be a discussion on a proposal to extend the term length of the mayor to four...
Pardon. Can we request a pause for us?
This will be a discussion to consider extending the term length for the mayor from the current two years to four years, which would match the rest of the council. Tonight is for the council to provide any input on this possibility, and the extended term would begin with the term in 2022. Part of the reason staff is bringing this to the council is the cost of running for office every two years is considerably high. I'm sure you all remember how much effort and how much money it took for all of you to run for council. The mayor has to do that every two years as opposed to every four like the rest of the council, and that's a big deterrent for a lot of folks. Four-year term for the mayor will also provide us with some political stability on the council, and it preserves that institutional knowledge. As the council's aware, you all alternate those terms. If we have a new mayor every two years, that doesn't provide us with the same amount of stability and that knowledge that carries over. And a four-year mayor would also provide us with some additional opportunities for influence regionally and at the state level. Previously, we had a mayor who served on the league executive board and helped us really influence a lot of...
I'm getting signs, but we need to speak louder.
I will do my best. Previously, we had a mayor that was able to serve on the league executive board, and that provided us with a lot of opportunities for influence down at the state level without us having to be there every single day. But with a two-year mayor, that does make it very hard because those terms are for several years at a time, and having a two-year mayor, those don't carry over. So, if our mayor is voted out, then we don't get to keep that seat on the executive board. It just moves up to the next person. This is just a brief snapshot of our statewide comparison. There are currently a total of 42 two-year mayors. 10 of those are not directly elected, so they are elected as a council member, and then the council comes together and elects a mayor from within. There are 49 four-year mayors, and six of those are not directly elected. Again, just showing the statewide comparison, these are for the mayors that are directly elected. Keenan is up here. We're a little bit higher for a lot of the two-year mayors. You'll also notice that half of those that are, half of the communities that are larger than us are charter communities, and it takes a little bit more for them to make these changes than it does for a general city. And just for comparison, the four-year mayors, we would be between Florence and El Mirage as far as the size comparison, and you can also see we're Bullhead and Havasu, where they both have four-year mayors. So, the next steps, if council wishes to pursue this, this does have to go before the voters as a ballot measure. This is not a step that the council can take directly. If the council chooses to do this, we have put together a resolution to send this to the ballot. It would come back to the council for approval in fall of 2019, and it would go to the August 4th primary election. That is a change from the PowerPoint in your packet. We just had a Senate bill that was passed on Friday that changed the date of the 2020 primary from later in August to the first Tuesday in August, so it would be August 4th. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions? We don't make decisions. But this would start in 2022?
Correct.
Which means that the next cycle, the next mayor would be elected for two years?
Yes, ma'am.
And then if this went to ballot and passed, it would become effective...
With the 2022 term? Yes. And we are seeking some head nods from the council if you would like this to come...
Oh, yours is a good head nod.
If you would like this to come back this fall.
All we're deciding on is to put a question to the voters, because the voters ultimately decide this.
Correct. And again, you would have the opportunity to finally say yea or nay this fall when the resolution came back, but we wanted to gauge the interest of the council this evening.
So, you're asking if we wanted to come back to council as a decision on whether to put it on the ballot?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like that?
Sure.
We would like that.
Okay. We will bring it back this fall. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next, the next order of business is Catherine Heidenreich Center update, and Mr. Mearsman, you are here to start this discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and everybody from the public. At the previous meeting, I was asked about the Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City, what they do. Bullhead City contributes out of their Parks and Recreation budget $355,000 toward their senior center. Lake Havasu City does not contribute out of their Parks and Recreation to their lake, to their senior center, but they do, their finance department said they do support other areas of the senior population, so they didn't specify exactly what that was, but, and obviously, we have been contributing $57,000. The senior center, the Catherine Heidenreich Center, they offer a lot of numerous programs and activities for personal enrichment to the seniors in our community. They offer education opportunities, computer skills, teach them how to use their personal devices, and a lot of recreation activities. It's also a great resource for medical and health screenings and things like that for the community. They also bring certified tax preparers in to help anyone that's with a limited income. Not only seniors, they allow everybody to come in and do that. And it's also a great place for the elderly to come when they have lost a significant other and just communicate with other people, so. Senior Services Director Deborah Doherty, she does a great job of organizing the events there and giving these people recreation opportunities to take part in. And the Board of Directors there, I think, does a great job with the limited budget that they have to keep the place going, so. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Keith Adams, who's the president of the Catherine Heidenreich Center Board of Directors, and give him an opportunity to share some more information with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mearsman. Welcome, Mr. Adams.
Well, first off, Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor, thanks for having us here. We're pretty low-tech, so we don't have PowerPoint. I didn't know what you guys wanted, so I have handouts for everybody that kind of, let's just give those out first, kind of, you can look them over. It's a little bit of the same report that I gave Mike, but it also has some of the I take it you have the small report, kind of a snapshot that I gave Mike, what's going on at the center. If you have that, basically, I'm not exactly sure what type of report you want, so I've kind of highlighted just some bullet points, just to go through them for you. kind of highlighted just some bullet points, just to go through them for you. As you well know, we've been in business for about fifty-one years now, and it started out as a, as a barracks. I'm not going to go into all that, but right now, we have about 12,000 square feet. And the one thing I really want the council to know, because you guys are all fairly new here, and I don't know how many times you've been down at Catherine Einreich, not one cent did the city nor the county put into those buildings. They were all built through the funds that we've received through bequests and grants and fund drives and you name it. So we've maintained those all these years. Started out with our original building that was built after the barracks. We expanded that building. We built an annex building. So, and we maintain that. Recently, the county's been kicking in a little bit because you probably know, if you've been around here long enough, in about the late nineties or around 2000, they dropped their participation in the center, which was the two-part-time people. The city then picked it up and we were all under Parks and Recreation. And as I put in my minutes, I've been with it for thirty-three years because I supervised them for twenty-four years. And I've been on the board since the day I retired in 2010. So I've been around it a long time and I know how many people go down there. You could come in and maybe see ten people at one time. You could see fifty people at a certain program. But just going through all that, we've been working since 2013 with our staff being kind of stipend through the city, and it's worked out quite well because it's given our board a little bit more control over the staff. But unfortunately, the downside of that is those three people, the two part-time and Deborah, lost their participation in state retirement and they also lost their healthcare. But they maintain their salaries. So that's, that's the good part of it. The bad side is those things. Um, we have at least thirty-plus programs going on at all times, and I think there's some of that information in there. Based on 2018 stats, we offered around sixteen and, uh, sixteen-hundred-and-ninety class sessions. We, um, had over fourteen thousand people participate. Now, that's not fourteen thousand individual, that's contacts, people coming into the center. We average about two to three hundred people a day. They're usually there anywhere from an hour to two hours, some up to three and four. Uh, let's see, volunteers, that's a big one. I didn't put that in the report because I didn't have it at the time. Volunteers, nearly three thousand hours a year, we use volunteers. A lot of them, probably around sixteen hundred are through our Retired Senior Volunteer Program, which is the RSVP program, and then the other two or three people, up to five, six, seven people that work for the staff and they're not in the RSVP, another thirteen hundred hours. And that's for the special events, the meetings, the teas, you name it, whatever we do, the craft fairs. And as far as associations, obviously, we're associated with you. We're associated with Kingman Regional. They give us some money every year to help out. They were the ones that put up a lot of the funds for the commercial kitchen that we did. Um, we're associated with the county. We sit on county land. And recently, like I said, they've been helping out a lot because up into the last two or three years, we paid for all of our repairs. We had to have a new roof, we had to have coolers, we did all that. They are kicking in some right now because each and every time that happened in the past, our funds went down drastically and we had to start, and as we all know, the banks don't pay a whole lot anymore, so we had to start redoing some different things. We moved over to Edward Jones and we had to be a little bit more conservative, but more proactive to try to keep that money in place. Um, we work with United Way and I think Mike mentioned tax program. We actually have two tax programs. We have, uh, a tax program that's, uh, for the folks that are sixty-five and older. Neither of these are at a cost. And then the VEDA program, which is for people that have sixty-five thousand or less a year, they can come in and get tax assistance. Work with WACOG, Western Arizona Council of Governments, Medicare questions, they come in a couple of days a week. The Area Agency on, um, Aging, that's where we get our Title V workers, which are, you know, bringing the people fifty-five and older in the workforce. I mean, I could go on. We work with the County Nutrition Center, which is right next door. We work with Husker Services, Red Cross, blood drives, um, the Cancer Care Unit. This group's been around for twenty-plus years and I think I saw Dorothy come in over here, and she's kind of the matriarch of the Kingman Cancer Care Unit. They've been meeting at the center for years and help out with some things, some of their members. We have Girl Scouts that have been there for years upon years. Um, Senior Corps, RSVP, Senior Angel Program. We do two craft fairs a year. We do monthly dinners that are open to the public. Uh, we have movie nights once a month. Judge Khan comes and he's our narrator and he has insights with all those movies. So, I mean, there's quite a few things. We do two tea parties a year, quite a few things. And if you looked at any of the budget numbers that I proposed and showed you guys, um, our receipts projected for this year are around a hundred and twelve thousand and our disbursements are about a hundred and fourteen. So we're going to lose a little money unless the market does really, really good. But if you take the fifty-seven thousand away, and actually, our payroll costs around seventy-two thousand when you add in all the other things, FICA and workers' comp and all that. But if you take the fifty-seven thousand away, we're gone in about eighteen months because we have a little over a hundred thousand in the bank. But if we have to put that money out to pay payroll costs, the center will close in about a year and a half. We could not sustain ourselves. I know that's a quick snapshot of what we do, but, um, that's basically what we do. Any questions?
Well, I have a comment. Two years ago, this, the then council passed this contract on in the consent agenda. And, and there was no question. And this time, there was a question. But of course, we've gone through a tax repeal that makes us look at everything. And it really does make us look at everything because we've had to close down three programs, downtown programs, and just other things that matter also to the city.
That I understand, and I tell people that every day. Because even though I'm not with the city anymore, I still maintain that. And I, I get on people every day about that that was one of the dumbest things they ever did is to repeal the half-cent sales tax.
But, you know, when I thought about it, I thought, one, it's good to ask someone to come up and tell this story because it is obviously a great, um, care to all of us, but also it gives a chance to highlight what's going on there, not just to this council, to the public.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's a plus because I, I don't know about you, but I, and I said this last time, I'd like to hear about all that going on. We've learned a lot. Learned a lot about your budget, yes, but also about the whole slew of activities and partnerships that you are engaged in. I think that's a good positive for this city. I think it's a very good positive, and I appreciate you coming and helping.
We're welcome to come in here and let you know.
Thank you. And against that, I would ask, are there any other comments or questions?
I'd like to say something if I could. First of all, I just want to thank you for coming tonight.
No, you're welcome.
I, I wish you were here on the seventh. When, uh, we had that agenda, just for everybody that's here, um, what was on consent was just a five-page IGA, and we didn't have any of this information that you gave us, and I don't think that you were here to answer any questions. And so, um, I, when public funds are involved, I will never vote on something out of ignorance. I want to understand. I want to be actively engaged. Um, and, and that's what I really see this as. Um, I didn't know at the time if it was five percent of the budget or fifty percent, which it's more like fifty percent of the budget.
Obviously, yep. You can see that.
So, you know, um, I've had a lot of people contact me over the, the last fourteen days and I've learned a lot about it and I appreciate it. And I do hope that, that the papers here will spotlight what you guys do. Uh, and you have my full support for the donation. I appreciate you coming.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that.
Any other comments?
Um, Mr. Adams, I would like to thank you. You do great work there. Um, Deborah Doherty, would you stand up? She is the director at the center. I got a chance to visit with her Thursday. Amazing work. And also, is Aunt Di happen to be in the audience? Deborah?
She had a cap meeting ahead of time. She does plan to try to make it by six.
Okay. Well, will you point her out because I definitely want to meet her. Aunt Di is what they call her, and she has, um, a Girl Scout troop, but she's held, they've held their meetings there and they make gifts for the homebound citizens and just there, she's doing amazing work too, and I want to thank all three of you and everybody. Thank you so much.
And I want to point out one other person besides Debbie, Bill Porter. Bill Porter, I.
Pardon? How about everybody else that came because of this?
You can't speak during this part, please. Sorry about that. Uh, I want to point out Bill Porter. I've been on the board since 2010, since I retired from the city. Um, Bill was our longtime president, so he has a lot to do. I've been the president for, I think I'm going on four years. But Bill was president for, I don't even want to add them up, they were too many. So I have to commend our own board for being so diligent all these years because the last, uh, gift we got from Luddy Crocker, we still have about ninety percent of that money over twenty-five years. And, you know, if it was a lot of boards that were frivolous and, I don't know, I don't know what they do, but we still have pretty much what we have from twenty-five years ago, and we maintain that because we're so frugal, so.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Yes. Any other comments? Yes.
Keith, once again, thanks for coming and thanks for everybody coming here tonight to support the, the center. Um, I know the thirty years that I've lived here in Kingman, I've always heard positive, positive things about what, you know, what is accomplished from the Catherine Heidenreich Center, and so I think it's a great thing. And of course, once again, thanks to all those who volunteer over those years and are currently volunteering.
Well, we, we couldn't run without them.
I agree.
Without the volunteers, there's no way.
I agree. I remember a number of years back, there was, I know Social Security used to come in and have offices there. I mean, it, it accomplishes and provides so much service to the community. It's a great thing.
Yeah, that was a huge service that was lost to us when they pulled out, so.
Unfortunately, but we, we, I, I really appreciate all the service that is done there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I can say that I've been there a number of times. For many, a number of events over the years, and I'm very aware of the contributions you make, and I appreciate it. But I have to say, one of the fun, most fun was a ballroom event, and I actually got up and lined dance for the first time, and I'm sad to say they have a video of it. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Adams. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
We have a few minutes here, and I've asked someone to.
I thought that since we might have a number of, of people here who care about senior issues, so I've asked Heather Braz- Brazel, uh, close enough Brazel, uh, of our senior corps to speak, because I can do that, and I've asked her to speak a few minutes on the senior corps because that's an opportunity for volunteerism and also services. So, Ms. Brazel, if you would give us just a few minutes, tell us what the senior corps is.
A consideration from the other council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you once again, Mayor Miles, for inviting me here. Um, as you mentioned, I'm Heather Brazel and I oversee all of the senior corps here in Mojave County. And, um, just really quickly, as you can see in your brochure, for those of you at home, we have some in the back. Candy can get you information if you're interested. Um, we have three different programs. Our Senior Companion Program, Foster Grandparent Program, and our RSVP Program. And each of those highlight different ways that adults fifty-five or better can give back to the community. And, um, we'll start with our RSVP Program, which we partner with many different organizations, one of which is the Catherine Heidenreich Adult Center. And some of our RSVP volunteers are actually here, so, hooray.
Ms. Brazel, you're going to have to speak into the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Because a lot of people at home want to hear this, too.
Oh, sorry. Um, okay. So with our RSVP Program, we help local community organizations like, um, the Adult Center, the Center for the Performing Arts, uh, the JAVC, different organizations. Our volunteers go in and help them fill their critical needs, like the Adult Center said, um, you know, helping reception or whatever they need. Um, our Foster Grandparent Program, really quickly, um, we work with youth in different capacities, so we partner with the Club for Youth, with our Head Start, um, the Blended Learning Center, um, and of course, KUSD, to name a few. So we help children get that extra support that they can grow up to be thriving and contributing individuals. And lastly, we have our Senior Companion Program, which helps our volunteers, um, our volunteers get paired with other adults who need extra support to get to the grocery store, doctor's offices, um, also if they, um, need respite care or, um, we also provide companionship so those individuals don't, um, become isolated and depressed. And, um, so there are lots of benefits to being a volunteer as well. We offer tax-free stipend. We offer, um, mileage reimbursement, and we offer paid holidays and leave time. We offer training. Um, we have, um, offer supplemental insurance while our volunteers are volunteering. Um, I know I'm kind of going really quickly because I only had a couple minutes. But of course, if anyone in the community needs some of our services, they can always contact me or go to one of our partners, like the Adult Center, um, and we can get them linked up with one of our volunteers. So I know that's it in a very small nutshell, um, but that's what we do basically because I only had a small amount of time and I'm, sorry, I'm fumbling.
Thank you. Well, that sounds like it's an opportunity for seniors who want to volunteer to contact you or who need the services to contact you.
Yes, definitely.
So I thought that was a, something that the public should know, that this service exists and that they can contact you at, uh, and you're located at the NAU offices?
Actually, we have an office in the WACOG building, right here downtown, at Fourth and Beale.
Excellent.
So, yeah. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, that concludes our, uh, work session agenda.
So, uh, without any other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to adjourn until six o'clock.
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
The motion and second to adjourn, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We'll reconvene at six o'clock. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to this meeting, the regular business meeting of the Kingman Common Council. Uh, could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles?
Here.
Vice Mayor Langenfelter?
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Present.
Councilmember Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would ask everyone to stand, is Pastor Shaw here?
Pastor Shaw?
What I'd ask is that Okay, what I'd ask is that we stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Join me, please, in a moment of silence. Join us in the pledge, the pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic where righteousness stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, because of the extraordinary attendance tonight and interest in the issue, I'm going to alter the agenda and the way that we enacted this evening, and we're going to bring the vote for the Katherine Heidenreich Senior Center to the forefront, because I know you're all here for that, or at least many of you. I'd like to display for you the fact that we have received this petition that is signed by a lot of very dedicated, interested people in this issue. And as I have voiced before, and on social media, I think it's important to realize that there is a lot of support on the scene, for the Senior Center on this council, and that it was a good thing, I believe, for us to have the presentation tonight and to demonstrate to the whole public all the valuable services that are going on at the center. Having said that, I am going to bring item 4B, because this is not a public hearing, so legally, we can do this. We're going to bring item 4B to the top of the agenda, and I'm going to read it and ask the council to go ahead and consider this vote. Item 4B is Katherine Heidenreich Adult Center Agreement. The City of Kingman has had a two-year agreement to make a financial contribution to the Katherine Heidenreich Center to partially fund senior citizen services. Agreement shall be in effect from July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2021. This item was pulled from the May 7th council agenda by Councilmember Travis Lingefelter, requesting additional information, which we have received. Staff recommends approval for funding under the agreement to the Katherine Heidenreich Adult Center. Council, we've had a great deal of information presented. Is there any dialogue or discussion that you would like to have, or further questions regarding this issue, before I entertain a motion? Then I would entertain a motion regarding the approval of the two-year agreement with Katherine Heidenreich Adult Center.
Madam Mayor, since it was I that pulled the item originally, for more information, I'd like to make a motion that the council approve funding under the agreement to the Katherine Heidenreich Center.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the contract for Katherine Heidenreich.
We can't hear you.
No, we can't.
I'm sorry, is this better?
Yeah.
Okay, I am going to have to speak right into it, just like, how's that? I have a motion and a second to approve the contract for Katherine Heidenreich Adult Center, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, now, we'll return to the agenda, and as, there's another change in the agenda tonight, which is all of our minutes have been put on the consent agenda, so that we can expedite our meetings. But we are going to do the call to the public, and, pardon? Okay, we're going to take a couple of minutes here for people to leave, we'll still have a, we will still have a call to the public if anyone wants to speak. Good evening. Let us return to the meeting, and we are now at the call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out a request form in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no more than three minutes. And at this time, we had a lot of people signed up on the item that we just voted on, and I am not going to go through this entire list, but if there's anyone still here who would like to, if there's anyone still here who signed up and would like to still speak, okay, please come to the podium.
To make sure everybody can hear me, because I could barely hear any of you talking.
I know.
My name is William McCabe. I have history, I worked in construction, carpenter for 30 years, inspector, and superintendent of building schools for the public. What I've found here is going to businesses is they don't comply with the ADA code for getting in and out of the business. I can barely open doors. Yesterday, I took my door tester, I checked a couple of buildings, doctor office, I've been complaining for six months, is 10 pounds, max is five pounds. That's max, that's double. We go in a restaurant, it's 15 pounds to get in. Most people are not aware of the poundage that it takes to open a door and get in, you know, they'll fight and push against the door. We have codes that are supposed to change that. That's not happening. You bring it up to the people of business, they don't care, we don't own the business, but you're running a business. In the run of business, the customer has to be able to get in and out of the business, you know, and that's not compliant. I went to the building department yesterday, talked to Inspector Dan Deal, he said he'd get back with me. He basically, he called me around 5, got back, he was polite, but he told me I need to contact the Department of Justice or Attorney General to get our codes enforced here in Kingman. That's not right. They're on the books, we need to enforce them. The building department does not take complaints, so you can't file a complaint where it's checked out and validated, you know, so there's no enforcement of the codes. There's no way to make a complaint for the code to get it aware, but I can call if somebody is, weeds are six inches high, and then that's taking complaint, but we have to get in and out of the business. It becomes a fire life safety issue, getting in and out. Above every business door, it will say, these doors are to remain unlocked. Well, if they're unlocked, but it's 20 pounds to get in and out, that's not accessible. And somewhere, we have to change, the building department to take the complaint to follow up, to enforce these codes. Doors are a maintenance issue and are ongoing and always need to be adjusted. Most door closures, 10, 15 minutes and the person's in and out. It's not a big job to go in there and adjust closures, you know, but...
Thank you, Mr. McCabe.
But ADA standards are online and on file, but thank you for your time, and I appreciate all your efforts that you guys put in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Manager Foggan, could we have a follow-up to this about the complaints for ADA compliance?
Yes.
In the future, as part of a work session, or do you mean now?
Please, can I have a second?
Oh, okay, excellent, thank you, thank you, chief. Okay, so, okay, we have someone else speaking on call to the public, please come on out if you'd like to speak.
You don't want to be rude and interrupt anyone?
Certainly.
I was a teacher and a principal for too many years, and that happened to me. I want to speak on the Katherine Heidenreich Adult Center. I'm a volunteer there, I teach the sewing classes on Sunday mornings, Sunday, oh, I'm really off of, on Thursday mornings, and it's been my pleasure for a lot of years, I don't even know how many, you'd have to ask Deborah how many. And your consent on that, I appreciate it 100%. I was going to, I don't know who your fire chief is, but I had a need for a call two weeks ago, my fire alarms were going off in my house and they were echoing all over, and I called them and grabbed my dog and went outside, and they were there, just like right now. And the next day, they came from the office, and they checked all of my fire alarms in my house, and helped me decide which ones were usable and which ones weren't. And one more thing about the Katherine Heidenreich Adult Center, I lost my husband in September. It was extremely devastating, even though he died from what they call Lewy Body dementia, which is Alzheimer's and Parkinson's and everything, all put together, and I was his 24/7 caregiver. When he died, it was extremely devastating for me, number one, I'd feel over in the bed and he wasn't there. And number two, I'd go to the Senior Center every day, and that's what kept my sanity in my head, was all of my friends there that I could speak with, that I could relax with, laugh with, and I, I'm now back to a laughing person, and that's my personality, it's not one of these down, you know, I always try to see the good and everything, and I just want to thank you for voting to support the center. I don't know what I'd have done right after my husband died, even though I have children, but they all have to go to work, and an empty house is echoes, thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing that.
And I'm leaving now, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I'm sorry, could you state your name, please?
Marilyn Johnson.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we have another speaker. Thank you.
This is my good friend. Thank you for hearing me, I really appreciate it, I...
Could you give us your name, please?
My name is Carol Duckworth, D-U-C-K-W-O-R-T-H. I'm always asked how to spell it. I've had lots of things written down because of the awesomeness of the Adult Center, and it's the only thing we've got here, but what I wanted to add to hers is a psychological help. When adults leave the workforce, which all of you will someday, it's, you lose your confidence, you lose your self-esteem, you lose so much, and like she said, grieving. It helps people that are grieving so much, but going there helps our feeling of self-esteem, our worthiness, our confidence, everything, it helps our brains trying to keep looking, too. So please think of this in two years, how important this is, it's not just games, they have over 200 activities a month, it's just, you know, you know all this, thank you, but think of the psychological that it does for us.
Oh, yes, thank you so much for sharing.
You're welcome.
Person that has signed up to speak is Henry Varga. Welcome, Mr. Varga.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have signed up to speak for the Heidenreich Center, and I will in a moment, I also signed up for the call to the public, so maybe I'm the transition between the two. I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Heidenreich Center, I've been for several years, I appreciate beyond measure your moving the item to the front of the agenda, you all benefit from that, the lack of noise and the congestion, and I appreciate your swift handling and appropriate handling of that matter, it is, I've found it to be very valuable service for the community, and the city is an essential partner to that. Having said that, I will then transition to my other item I wanted to address the council with since I'm here, and it's loosely speaking, a takeoff, a tangential comment to the recent election pertaining to our sales tax that we have for infrastructure. Now, I think it's commonly known, all the construction that was taken place from those funds that were raised, there are questions, some of them valid questions, on how big the tax was, and some other issues, and the public generally is against taxes and anything on the agenda that gives the public a chance to vote against the tax, most of the time they will. However, I want to address something, an alternative view of this, and that is, one of the big issues that causes the city infrastructure to need increased maintenance, repair, and more expensively replacement or expansion, is the additional demands made upon that infrastructure. And those additional demands come from two sources, an increased population and increased outside commercial activity that's coming into the community to use our infrastructure. That includes all the people that live near the city but outside the city, and we have a lot of those in our particular community. So how do they participate, these two groups, in helping to offset the cost of our infrastructure requirements to maintain, repair, replace, or expand? And since the sales tax was presented and now has been removed, and personally, I thought that at least a part of that... and personally, I thought that at least a part of that sales tax should have remained. And the council has now been saddled further, I think inappropriately, as unfortunately, in my personal view, that you can't do it in the future without this public vote, which you're unlikely to get. That leaves only one thing left, in my view, and that is where then can we look to, where can we look, where is the appropriate place to look for those who have an effect on the infrastructure? And that is the growth. And therefore, I think that the city council really is left with little alternative to address the long-term infrastructure requirements than to return and revisit the issue of the impact fees on the developments and the new construction. And I don't see how you have any other choice. There's an additional argument that goes along with that. I don't, I have mixed emotions over it, but it goes along with it. And it is very politically charged statement I'm about to make, and I apologize if I offend anybody. But the people who fought the most against the sales tax are the very ones who caused the development. So I think that we should look and say, well, look, unfortunately, folks, you've done this to yourself and we have to look at the impact fees now and the cost of construction and to say, this is where we've got to get it. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Varga.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Varga.
You're moving that forward on you.
Yes. Manager Foggan, I know we've had this as part of our workshop sessions and I expect that that will be returning to our continued discussion prior to the budget being adopted. Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up for Call to the Public. Is there anyone else that wanted to address the council? And we will move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to have to improve these mics. All matters here are listed to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any, do any of the council members want to remove any of the consent agenda items from the consent agenda for consideration? Given that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda items A through N. That includes all of the minutes from our May 7th and 9th work sessions and regular minutes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through N. I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Old Business, 4A. Resolution Number 5205, adopting policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of community facilities districts. On April 16th, 2019, a draft of policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of community facility districts was presented to the city council. James Gill of Gus Rosenfeld will provide the council with an overview of the newly drafted policy guidelines and application procedures and highlight significant changes made. Council's requested revisions to the original draft will be discussed for further consideration. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5205, adopting policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of a community facilities districts. Good evening. Please come forth and walk us through this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us back for the records. The clerk's staff here with me. My name's Andrew McGuire. I'm an attorney with Gus Rosenfeld. Tonight with me is Jim Gill. He's a partner of mine in the Public Finance Department. You may have heard Jim's name thrown about as we've been talking about CFDs. He does a lot of that work for our firm as well. The policies that you had presented to you about a month ago were a version of the CFD policies that we created a while ago with some changes. And so what you have in front of you tonight is going to be familiar, but modified because we've had quite a few CFDs that we formed over the years and we've tweaked the policies to adjust to the law. There's been some significant changes in the last two years. But more importantly, to adjust to the realities of the CFDs. To take you back a little ways, when CFDs first were formed, and we're over 20 years ago now, there was really no guidance whatsoever in the state. And so they sat dormant for quite a while. Nobody really formed many. But once they started getting interested in them, and more importantly, once the development community in the state wanted to get involved in utilizing what is a very valuable financing tool to them, we had to come up with a set of guidelines that would do two things. One, it would give you all the direction to the development community of what you're expecting and to give you all an understanding of what the financing tool will do and how it works. And so the policies you have here are a blend of a few things. Some of them are best practices that we've determined help you, help us get all the information necessary to try and figure out how this is going to work. A lot of it is to provide information to people who would be in contact with a CFD in one way or another. Right now, the two different kinds you're discussing are very, very different types of CFDs. The typical one is formed with a single or just a few owners who sign a waiver and you have formation without the process of an election. Information among the people involved in a CFD in that case is kind of simple because everybody's on the same page. They're all your applicants. They're applying to you. A little more difficult when you have property owners who are not the applicants and then you have a lot more moving parts. You have an election, so you have the need to provide them with information. The policies we have here are simply your direction to us and the development community on what you want us to provide you in order to make the decision on whether or not you're going to approve this financing tool for the development community to use. It is not set in stone, but it is, we represent a large majority, I believe, of the CFDs in the state. And so this is fairly consistent with what has been done across the state. So it's not new ground for us. It's just that this is a revision to what you originally had that was a little bit older. In the end, it's policy direction. That's what we're here for, from you all. So we are happy to take comments on whatever it is you'd want to discuss. Jim is going to be available to walk you through page by page or just high-level comments, whatever you want to do, specific sections. I'll be here to answer any questions you have as well. But, you know, we certainly don't want to take any more time, Mayor, than you need to, but we'll be here as long as you want.
Thank you.
So would you like to proceed for us?
First, I'm going to look at the council. I'd like to know if you'd like to go page by page or if you'd like to, no.
I'm not sure it's necessarily appropriate. They already done that once before.
Yes, they have. I'm just asking. So just go through the major divisions. Okay. Before you leave the podium, are there questions for Mr. Flyer?
I have one, but I'm not sure if it's necessarily appropriate. I'd like to discuss the governing board. Sorry, I'm not loud enough? Is that what you're telling me? I'd like to discuss the 1.10, which is now 1.8, the governing board. My biggest concern with all of that put together is that at the sole and absolute discretion of the CFD board, which I can appreciate that the council is involved, I can appreciate that two entities of the major player is involved. But what it sounds to me like is an old airport authority that we've lived through. So I want to make sure that that is not the case.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Nelson, I don't know if I can guarantee you it's not the old airport authority.
Probably not. I understand that.
But I know what you mean by that. The CFD board up until two years ago was the seven of you. There was no distinction. There were only two CFDs formed in the state with a private board. And so almost every one of them that's been formed is always the council members who simply are turning the hat around and becoming the CFD board and issuing debt. And it's hard for your citizens to recognize the difference between council member and board member. And so a lot of times, the two get conflated. And really more so at this time of year when you're adopting budgets, you will adopt your budget along with the CFD budget at the same time. When your auditors come to do the audit, they're going to do a single audit of everything together, even though they are two political subdivisions. So even though the board has that kind of discretion, its discretion is necessary because the citizens who are members, who are residents of the CFD or property owners of the CFD who are going to be paying the taxes, look to the seven of you to defend their interests. And for the seven of you to understand that the consequences coming back to you, if they feel they're treated unfairly, may come back to the city, even though the city has no direct liability for the CFD. And so you will see throughout here, and it's certainly something that you all can decide to change, we have reserved absolute discretion to the board, in this case, seven-ninths of you are here right now, because of the significance of the tool that you're using. This is a very powerful financing tool and if it wasn't favorable to development, they wouldn't be pushing for it. It's just a, it's a tremendous benefit and can be quite a burden. Some of the things you see in there, like the debt ratios, are intended to ensure that the property doesn't get overburdened and then put you all in a position with your city hats on of not being able to do anything else.
And that is the next concern is making sure that the city is covered because frankly, a developer is going to be just fine. In their end, they will be just fine. They'll figure it out. We don't need to be 20 years from now going, wow, we're still straddled with a few issues, aren't we? Because there are a few cities in the state that have that issue. So we do want to be careful with that. So that's where that concern comes from.
Thank you.
I would just have a couple of questions, if I may. First with 1.7. And forgive me, but I can't find the statutory basis for the language that's in 1.7. Maybe you could explain where that's at.
Oh, absolutely, Mr. Vice Mayor. This, 1.7 is what I will refer to, and I'll let Jim jump up if he disagrees with me, as the skin in the game provision. Because of this financing tool providing such a huge benefit to the developer who's unable to use it, this is ensuring that they bring sufficient financing and their own financing to the table to try and make sure that everybody's investments equal. Because, as Councilwoman Nelson hit it on the head, if you do not have a successful CFD, the developer really isn't going to suffer much. The single-purpose entity that was part of the development agreement will typically be gone. Everyone will leave and you all are still here with a failed CFD and angry people. So this is intended to make sure that the players are serious. Now, that number is not set in stone at 25 cents per, was it 25 per $1? I can't read to this point. That, you know, one to four ratio is not necessarily set in stone, but that is consistent with every other CFD policy that we have.
Before they went to Wall Street, you would have to have somebody that was serious, right? Because Wall Street's just not going to throw money at a project with no expectation of getting paid back, right? Well, it looks like there's language in here that was added that it's subject to negotiation. There's a little bit of flex, so I appreciate that.
The last thing I wanted to talk about was Article 1.10. And I'm going to reference 4.7. So in reading Article 1.10, it says, "The CFD board will determine in its sole and absolute discretion the amount, timing, and form of financing to be used by a CFD." Then if you look in 4.7, since the CFD board doesn't exist at the time of application, why then does Article 4.7 require that a completed application require the information in 4.7A through 4.7G? The applicant doesn't even know what form of financing the future CFD board will in its sole discretion choose as its financing method? So it's just a little confusing and it seems like there could be a little different language there, like maybe prior to the issuance of assessment bonds or something like that. Could you- Absolutely. Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Jim and I actually had a conversation about this yesterday in my office that after we saw the question on that issue, on a CFD that's going to be one or two members and they're all signing a waiver on the front end and we don't have an election, I think that that's a reasonable position to say that we don't really need to know what kind of debt you're going to issue on the front end. We just need to know how much debt you want to issue so that the seven of you, along with the two other board members, can determine, does that make sense for the CFD? Are you issuing too much debt? Is it too much of a burden? The mechanism, whether it's an assessment bond, whether it's geobonds, really doesn't matter at that point. In an election version, however, now we have property owners who are not part of the game. They are just going to be asked to vote to form this financing mechanism to tax themselves in order to build infrastructure. Without that information, they may not have enough information to be able to make the call on whether or not it's feasible. So I think there's definitely a different approach that might happen because of the types of CFDs that are formed. And it's a challenge when you're doing a policy that's directed mainly at the developers are all in the room version and not the version we're talking about otherwise.
That makes sense to me. Thanks.
Do you have any other questions or comments regarding the policy, proposed policy? I would entertain a motion regarding approval of Resolution 5205, adopting policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of a community facilities districts.
So moved?
I have a motion to adopt these guidelines. Do I have a second? We'll discuss after I get a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the policy guidelines and application procedures for establishment of community facilities districts. Discussion, please. Councilman?
Actually, there was someone in the audience waving for discussion. He didn't realize.
I just need to follow it.
Ah, sorry. Okay. I am good. This is not a public hearing, but I can still entertain comments. So I'll do it during our period of discussion. Please come forth, Mr. Angle.
Hi, Mayor and members of council. My name is Tyler Angle. I'm the president of Angle Homes here in Kingman. We build homes and do developments. I just had a couple of questions on how the CFDs work. The first question is what land they're allowed to go over? So theoretically, I have a subdivision that has multiple phases. And say one phase is done, the homes are there. The second phase is halfway built out with homes. And then the third phase, let's say I'm putting in the streets right now, and then an applicant brings an application for a CFD. Can that go over all three phases or none of those phases? Or only vacant land or unplatted land? I'm not sure.
Mr. Cooper, is it okay for us to have this answered? Okay, if you would, please come up and answer that.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jim Gill with Gus Rosenfeld. Very good question. Thank you. Yeah, the answer is, again, at the sole discretion of the CFD board, a CFD may be permitted and allow different types of property within a CFD at different phases of development. But again, that would be at your sole and absolute discretion. But that would not be uncommon to do it that way. And the preferred approach generally is to include as much land as possible that's being developed in a similar manner in the same CFD. So what gentleman is describing could work, obviously depending on lots of details. But yes, that would be permissible.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Then, I was looking through the version, yesterday's versions, which I think is the latest resolution. And in the 1.7 that Vice Mayor Lingefeltor is bringing up, the way it's worded, it seems like the skin in the game paragraph could be nullified because it says unless otherwise agreed in the development agreement. So there could be a development agreement theoretically that was lower than the 25 cents per dollar. And I kind of like the 25 cents because, you know, developers such as myself has skin in the game. They're committed. Where this says unless otherwise agreed could be anything. So maybe we could reword that to say a minimum of 25 cents or more, or something like that. And the development agreement was one suggestion I had. And then the other change in yesterday's version in 4.9 was it was changed from the applicant to pay the cost of insurance related to the bonds, I guess. That was changed to be paid by the CFD itself and was- And was wondering what, what brought about that change? And which one of those is, is commonplace, I guess? Who, who normally pays the insurance and why, why it was changed to be the CFD? Thanks.
We have a response, please.
Absolutely. I'll take the second one first. And actually, it's the cost of issuance. There may be insurance associated with any particular bond issue, but generally, we talk about the cost of issuance. To pay the professionals, to pay the bankers, to sell the bonds, things of that nature. And the norm is how we have it reflected in these revised guidelines. The default is that we use bond proceeds to pay cost of issuance. That is the norm throughout the state for any bond issue, whether it's a city bond issue, a school bond issue, or other CFDs. There are a few exceptions. Some cities believe it to be important that every penny of bonds they sell, for example, if they sell, sell $10 million of bonds for a CFD, they want $10 million going in the project fund, to the penny. And then they say, hey, developer, we're doing this as an economic development tool for your benefit. You therefore shall pay the cost of issuance, whatever that might be. You know, typically $200,000, $300,000. That would be unusual, but it is done on a regular basis for at least one of our clients. That's just the position they've taken. You're obviously free to disagree with that. And the guidelines before you tonight have that norm. Again, where, where we use bond proceeds to, to pay cost of issuance.
So the norm is that it's a district or a district, a CFD expense?
Yes, that's one way to put it. It is, it is an expense paid from bond proceeds. The, the bonds are ultimately supported by special assessments and/or property taxes paid by property owners within the CFD. So it's a one-time, non-reoccurring expense. And I apologize, I've already forgotten the first question that was posed.
It was about 1.7?
1.7.
I think it was primarily about wanting it to be more than 25.
Oh, okay. And, and yeah, I, I think Andrew touched on that section. That, that is covered. Well, the idea here is that, again, we want to give you, as the CFD Board, the maximum flexibility. So because we're trying to address with this set of guidelines projects with one developer and projects with 100 homeowners or landowners, excuse me, depending on what project approaches, comes to the CFD and when, you may have a development agreement. And at, at the development agreement is when you can negotiate with the developer what they'll pay, you know, what their contribution might be, so to speak. And it could be more, it could be less than 25%. It's, it's, it's really at your discretion. There's no hard and set rule. What you're seeing in these guidelines is the custom. But there have been cases throughout the state that have deviated from that. Again, depending on the deal, because folks recognize that one size truly doesn't fit all. And there may be a project that just makes more sense for you, and you may be willing to bend a little bit on that. So that, we feel it's worded in an appropriate manner to give you the flexibility to decide on a case-by-case basis.
And again, I, I couldn't find this specific clause linked to the statute. And so this, in addition to anything else that the CFD would want to negotiate and, and, or, or conditions that they would want to put onto a CFD, that's all up to subject to negotiation, right?
That is largely the case. I mean, as Andrew mentioned, the, the purpose of the guidelines is to let the development community know how the city council thinks about development as it relates to CFDs. So it's sort of a starting point. In some cases, it's also the endpoint. Some of these CFDs that I've worked on have been very straightforward. And you don't, we don't have to move one way or the other, and we get them done within, from start to finish, six months. That is not the norm. And the, the project I've heard described for your city is absolutely unusual in terms of 100-plus landowners. So that is not a six-month project. I think you all know that. That will take lots of coordination. In, in my experience, the largest project my firm has worked on in terms of coordinating with different developers is 18. And that in and of itself was very unusual and took a ton of coordination over a one-year-plus period with, with a group, with a development group that came together to sign every document and, you know, with out-of-state entities and lien holders and a real headache. But that's not the norm either. The norm is one or two developers, typically one. And, and they vote on it upfront, or I'm sorry, they submit a petition upfront. We waive elections, we waive lots of stuff, notices, publications, and we can move quickly. That's, that's the easiest method. But obviously, you take what, what you get.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up to that, if I may.
Absolutely, go ahead.
I apologize. With respect to 1.7, I'm trying to justify a scenario wherein it would be appropriate to, I guess, with respect to the point 2.5 for infrastructure, community improvements, where it would be appropriate to go any less than that. In your experience, is there a scenario where that would be appropriate? I, I can think of many scenarios wherein maybe somebody would want to see, you know, a higher one and, you know, riskier situations or whatever.
Right. Yeah. To the, to the extent I've seen less, it's maybe been 20%. I mean, that 25% is, is fairly arbitrary. I mean, there's no magic. The rating agencies from the bond rating agency companies aren't telling us that. No one's telling us that. It has sort of become the norm in Arizona. But you could certainly make an argument for a little less, just like you could for more, just depending on the nature of the project. So that's why we, we try to build in that discretion. But we have, but, but you are sending, if, assuming you adopt the guidelines, you're sending a message, this is what you expect to see. And if you, if you developer are going to come in with something less, tell us the story. Explain why it makes sense for the community.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments, questions about this item?
Hi, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You had, you had mentioned that 25% is the norm. Granted, the fact that your firm has only worked on up to 18 participants, and now this one might could turn into, for example, the possibility of 100. Doesn't that make that more tenuous and also more, somewhat more risky, would you say?
Well, I, I think the risk is, is upfront as, and I shouldn't, I don't even know if I'd describe it as risk. It's a lot of coordination.
Okay.
This is very different, so we kind of have to think about it a little differently. The expectation, I think, would be that we would have at least, because the statute requires it, 25% of the landowners coming to, to, to the city with a petition, because that's the minimum for the, but in the more normal course, we would have 100%. So obviously, that's, that's different right there. So 25% is the minimum. Hopefully, we get 50%. That would make things easier if we had 50% of the landowners coming on that petition upfront. Because then we know that we have some certainty when we, when we have to go out and do the election for the formation. And then the subsequent election to actually get bonds issued. So it's, the more we can creep over, closer to that 50%, but to your point, you know, and we've been referring to it as sort of the 100th landowner in the district who may have two acres and, you know, and is not going to be along for this. But ultimately, they will have imposed upon them a, a special assessment or a property tax, depending on how any particular project goes, and they will have to pay it to support the bonds and to support the development. But I would, I would assume that you, you want to avoid that as much as possible because then, again, that is not the norm. The norm is that the person accepting that tax is at the table upfront with you, and it's, it's an exchange. They're, you know, they're, they're getting their project in exchange for your bond proceeds to get re, partially reimbursed for that project. That's the exchange. But the 100th landowner may not feel that way. So you ultimately will have to answer to that. So that's why we all have to be a little more sensitive, given the nature of this initial project. I don't know that I'd call it more tenuous, but it's certainly, it's, it's more work upfront with coordination. And I, I would expect that it would be more work for the, for the developer, the master developer or the, the lead developer, to kind of wrangle everyone together, or at least a majority.
Thank you. Any other comments, any discussion? Okay, then I would entertain a motion regarding the...
I made a motion.
We already made a motion.
Motion in a second.
Pardon? Oh, we have the motion in a second. Thank you. I have a motion in a second to approve. There's been so much discussion. It's good. So we have a motion and a second to approve the Resolution 5205, adopting policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of a community facility, of community facility districts. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to new business. Resolution number 5214, adopting a pension funding policy. The state of Arizona's public safety personnel retirement system is, as a whole, underfunded. The City of Kingman's police and fire trust funds are underfunded by close to 50% or $30.2 million. In an effort to not only comply with legislation, but to communicate the council's commitment towards sound financial management of the city, the pension funding policy will be taken to achieve a 100% funded status of its pension liability by June 30th, 2036. Staff recommends council approve Resolution number 5214, adopting a pension funding policy. Manager Foggan or Director Moline? Ms. Tina Moline.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we've been talking about PSPRS and our unfunded pension liability for quite some time. And we know that by July 1st of 2019, we have to adopt a pension funding policy. And that policy not only communicates that you recognize that we have that unfunded pension liability, but your commitment to address it as well. And so in the pension funding, the pension funding policy, we are required to identify our funding ratio goal, the date that we plan on attaining that, and then how we plan on attaining that goal. So the pension funding policy in front of you or in your packets states that our funding ratio goal is 100% by June 2036. And there are several actions that we will take to meet that goal by that date. And one of those is to maintain our annual required contribution, which we're doing, and we're going to continue to do that. We're also going to prepay all of those payments as well as prepay our budgeted PSPRS expenditures. So above and beyond that annual required contribution. And then as we talked in April about fund balance and what we wanted to do with excess fund balance, we talked about using one-time monies from the general fund, if the general fund allowed, to pay down that liability. And so specifically, and I just want to be sure that, make it very clear what we included in the policy, specifically, we state, or we're including in the policy, that the city council will dedicate a one-time payment towards paying down the city's unfunded pension liability each fiscal year as part of the adopted budget if the general fund's budgeted fund balance exceeds 40% of its budgeted expenditures and outgoing transfers. And so that was one of the questions that Vice Mayor Lingefelter has, had posed during our budget work sessions, is how can we communicate that? And so that, this is a very specific, but also allows flexibility so that we're not required to make that payment if the fund balance doesn't allow. And we don't have to alter our fund balance policy because now this is included in our pension funding policy. So we're required to review this every year, and we are also required to adopt the policy every year and then post it on our website. So I will entertain any questions or, and if not, staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Questions for Director Moline? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you putting this in a formal document that really substantiates for the future how this will work. And against that, I would entertain a motion regarding Resolution 5214, adopting a pension funding policy.
I'll move that we, we accept.
I have a motion. I have a motion to accept. We have a second, a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Then all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5B, airport hangar lease discussion. The Airport Advisory Commission has been evaluating a 3% increase to hangar leases at the Kingman Municipal Airport. The commission has recommended that council freeze any increases to the monthly hangar leases until a rate study can be completed in fiscal year 2019, 2020. Manager Foggan, who's, oh, Mr. Johnston.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. For quite a number of years, the hangars, the rental hangars at the airport have had an automatic 3% increase on rent. Now, again, when we're talking just a few years, that's not a major issue. But in many instances, when you look at the age of these buildings, we're talking over 10 years, in some cases, close to 20. And so the hangar rents have gone up. One of the things staff has recommended to the Airport Advisory Board is putting this on hold for a year and going out and doing a survey of all the other airports in state and see from an inflationary standpoint or an inflationary kicker standpoint what other people are doing, what the minimum and maximum limits are, and what the timeframes are. Is it every year? Is it every three years? Is it every five years? And that's the, the history behind that. And again, the Airport Advisory Commission, and I apologize when I say board, coming from a different city, I get mixed up. They have requested that on those monthly hangar leases, that we freeze it, that we study it, and then staff come back to them with a, a survey and an idea of what path they want to take. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Have, just a couple, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Go ahead, you first, please.
Thanks. Steve, right?
Yes.
If I remember right, when the city took over the airport last year, didn't they, didn't we freeze it last year also? The rates did increase already come fiscal year.
I don't believe it was frozen.
It's not frozen.
We, we continued them as they were.
They, okay, they, okay. So that's why I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
I would, I'd support this. I know that when we took it over, one of the things that I had asked the prior managers was, what are you basing that 3% on? I mean, what is that based on? And, and it really wasn't based on anything. It just seemed to be sort of a 3% that they had somehow just grabbed out of the air. So I think this is appropriate, and, and I would hope that, whatever the recommendations are that come back, that they would, this study would recommend some sort of formula or something to, to really, you know, serve as the basis for a recommendation of an increase, rather than just being, it's 3%, because it's 3%, and it's always been 3%. So it's going to continue to be 3%. Something a little more than that.
Other, other, well, my most recent other airport, the dynamic there was it was based on the Phoenix CPI.
Sure.
And then there was a low limit and a high limit.
Right.
But something that developers and hangar owners and others could basically bank on in future.
Something logical, right?
Yes.
And can I jump in real quick? Just when we took over, I, I started rewriting all of the, the, the new leases. And that is tied to a, an indicator that I got from the finance department. So the new leases are...
Your modifications are?
Correct. The modifications of the rate will be tied to a, an indicator. I just don't remember which one it was off the top of my head.
Thanks, Carl.
Yes.
Councilwoman Staley.
I just want to make a couple of comments to the council. As the airport commission liaison, this commission has been discussing this issue for quite some time now. They've, they have already called a lot of the different airports in the state. And so I think it's important to know that our lease rates are already on the high side compared to some of the other airports of considerable size and sized cities. The other, the other thing that really bothers me is that there seems to be different lease rates for different people. So there, there was not, it wasn't set on size or any of these other things. It's just a lot of different people pay a lot of different prices. And the city is going to have to do this study in order to make it fair so that everybody's paying the same type of lease rates across the board instead of based on whatever they used to base it off of. So I am absolutely in favor of freezing this 3% increase until we can get our arms around the lease rates in general, all these different facets, and find out what our rates need to be to be competitive on top of that. So, you know, I know that we've talked, we talk about, in the, the, the commission talks about building more hangars because they are all booked up and, and there's demand for more, and it, and it's something that would bring more revenue. But when we do that, we also need to make sure that we're charging a fair price and that our leases are strong and... that our leases are strong, and that we can, we can fill those up with, with a good rate. So, that's just my two cents from the commission.
Councilwoman Wade.
A quick question. Do we have an estimated timeline for when we can get this study conducted, finished?
It would be a priority. The idea is to come back to, well, to have something back to the airport board as soon as possible, but again, to have something in hand that's come back to the council prior to next year's budget session, so within a year, both the study, a recommendation to the airport board, and then something back to you.
And will that study include sort of a, I guess, a list of criteria as to how these rates are applied to the different hangars and sizes and all, and all that stuff?
Yes, simply. I could go into much more detail, but this is not the time or the place.
Right, okay.
Thank you. I guess my only comment is, I appreciate the work that you are doing, and that the commission is doing, working together with you to make these recommendations, because I know this is a very productive relationship that is occurring at the airport, and so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, against that, I would ask, would entertain a motion on freezing any increases to monthly hangar leases until a rate study can be completed and brought back to council.
I'd like to, oh, sorry.
You want to discuss?
I just wanted to make the motion.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we freeze the three percent increase on the hangar leases.
Could I have a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Watkins, second. Any discussion, any further discussion on this item? Then, all in favor of this motion and second, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Final new business is consideration of canceling the August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen work session and regular meeting. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference will be held in Tucson, August twentieth through twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen. Due to the timing of the conference and the travel required for both the council and city staff, staff is recommending that the council cancel the work session and regular meeting of August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen. I think it's pretty self-explanatory, so I would entertain a motion on this item to cancel the August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen work session and regular meeting.
I motion that we cancel. We're going to all jump in.
Let's just do this. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to cancel the August twentieth work session and regular meeting. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. Now, item six, golf course update. Mr. Miersman.
Try to be quick, because it's been a long evening. So, this is going to be an update on the golf course. Basically, it's been a very smooth transition so far, thanks to the finance department, HR department, IT department, and all of the staff we have there. Everybody's done a great job. Our whole team has stepped up, and I've invited our golf professional, Greg Pruden, is in the back of the room there, and I invited him here to introduce him to you guys, so you could put a face with a name, and you can feel free to ask him a question or two when I'm done with this, if you, if you feel so inclined. So, I'll try to get through this, but the pro shop staff, like I said, have stepped up. Haley Bradley has done a great job for us. Denny Martin, Jacob Griffin is a new employee we have there, has done a really good job. Shelley Hall in the restaurant, Ernie Dollarheight, and our recreation staff has helped up. Beth Matthews comes over there and helps out still. We're in the process of trying to get some more part-time help, so, but the whole team has stepped up and done a great job. Congratulations to Haley Bradley. She was selected, one of four coaches to go to Scotland and represent Arizona, coaching the kids to go play in Scotland. So, we're really proud of her for that, and it's a great honor. So, leagues, we've done a good job of getting leagues started back up, the city league and county league. Greg's made contact with airport businesses and trying to get them started, and he's got some feedback from them, and we'd like to see them, and possibly the hospital, get a league, and he's working real hard and trying to get a lot of that stuff done. So, and like I said, the team members that have stepped up, Ryan Freworth, went and worked in the pro shop for a while, and we had a groundskeeper step up and work in the pro shop for a while, and the food and beverage. The golf course maintenance team did a great job of cleaning, painting. We put up our logoed flag collection, and Haley Bradley had the idea about putting the historic photos up in there, and we put all those up. Patrick Friend did a great job of stepping up, and he's done a great job, I think Greg would tell you, of working with him, introducing him to everybody, and did a really good job. So, they did a great job of reaching out to all the tournament organizers, talking with our customers, with the men's club, that Greg's done a really good job of getting together with them and trying to get them on board. We evaluated every position and formulated very detailed job descriptions and job duties for each job, and we were looking at the group pricing and trying to get, getting that lined up. We took input from our staff that hears from all the customers about what the needs are, and they've just done a really good job. Here's some photos of the logoed flag collection, the befores and afters, what it looked like in there before and what it looks like now, and we've gotten a lot of really nice comments about it. There's another photo of the area between the patio and the grill. This is the ladies restroom. There's the, what the sinks used to look like, and our staff did a little remodel in there, put the new sinks in there, and it looks a lot better. And even one of our pool technicians redid the vanity in the ladies. So, I mean, it's just a total team of everybody stepping up and doing a really good job. So, really pleased with that. Here's some of the historic photos that we found at the museum and put in the pro shop, and they're getting a lot of interest. I mean, over the weekend, it was, it was our busiest weekend this past weekend was, with the Desert Scheffler Tournament, and that event went great. Greg and his staff did a great job. Patrick did a great job. The feedback from them was that everything is excellent, and we're working with them. After every event we'd have in our department, we look at it, is there anything we can do better? And we've got them thinking the same thing, is there anything that we can do better to make that event even better? Here's just some more pictures, historic photos. I think they're pretty cool. They're all around the pro shop, like I said, and they're getting a lot of interest. On the golf course, it was a busy winter, basically, with the cleanup from Snowmageddon, a lot of damaged trees, and we lost a, one tree, but a lot of hanging limbs and dangerous situation, and we got that cleaned up. They've leveled two tees over the winter and made those a lot nicer, number fourteen, number seventeen. We've added some cart path extensions. We're trying to get the people, the customers, to get on the cart paths around the greens and tees, because if they pull up right in front of the green, they wear that area out substantially, you know, six carts, and they're all turning the wheels and getting off and turning their feet. It's a lot of damage on the turf, so we're constantly trying to work on that. Fairways are looking great right now. We overseed a lot of the damaged areas last fall, and they're, they came in great. We just started following the Desert Scheffler Tournament, aerifying the greens, which is always a challenging time. You're in there tearing them up after them, and they're looking so beautiful, but you have to do that to really help them get through the season. So, onto the golf course revenue, which I know everybody's interested in. Basically, if you look at this, we're down twenty-three thousand dollars in the first quarter, but thanks to Snowmageddon, most of that is. We would actually be up if it wasn't for Snowmageddon. We were closed, we, if you look at February, we lost thirty-nine thousand dollars, and that's from being closed seven days and having, I believe it was four other days, that we had only ten people out there, it was so cold. So, the, we lost nine hundred rounds of golf during Snowmageddon, thirty-nine thousand dollars. We had four additional days where only ten players came out, and I haven't looked at the books, but I'm pretty sure they're probably season pass holders, because that's who usually comes out on those really cold days, and not a lot of other people were out. So, and the temperatures in February were thirteen degrees cooler than they were in two thousand and eighteen, so, and ten degrees below the historical average. So, it was a challenging February, I guess you'd say, with Snowmageddon. So, promotions, like I said, Greg's done a really good job with these. Mother's Day, we had mothers golf free on Mother's Day, and we had ten, mothers took advantage of that, and believe it or not, none of them played by themselves, so we think it was a good thing, so. And we have Education Appreciation Day, Veterans Appreciation, Lunch and Loop, we've had, and Greg's going to have a clinic, free clinic for adults for the, I'm not sure, first fifteen people that sign up for it, I think, but so far, we've had over a hundred customers take advantage of the specials that we've had, and, you know, if we didn't have those, that'd be a hundred less people there. So, people are taking advantage of them and enjoying it, and we're going to have more to come, obviously. We're continuing to look for ways to get more people out there. We're in the process of talking to our disc golf community and getting disc golf on the golf course, and foot golf, where you kick a soccer ball and play golf, there's actually a hole with a flag in it, and we've contacted several golf courses that do these things. And what you would do, you would do those later in the day, not in the morning, when the golf play is heavy, but we're in the process of getting this going too. So, like I said, we've got the disc golf community excited about it, and they're going to come out and bring their portable ones, and we're going to lay out the golf, nine holes at a time, and try it and see. So, we're pretty excited to see how it will fit in with the, with the golf. So, with that, I want to touch base, just a little bit more about the Desert Scheffler Tournament, like how good that was. It was actually, last Friday was our biggest day revenue-wise of, in the past two years. So, I think we've got a lot of good going on, and like I said, I'd like to just, if anybody has any questions for Greg, I'd like for him to come up and answer them for you, because he's done a great job so far, and we're excited to have him. He's a class APJ professional, he's a very important part of our operation, and he's fitting in great with the, the Desert Scheffler. People are very complimentary about the job he did with their event, so just a lot of stuff going good there. So, if anybody has any questions, me, I'd be happy to answer them, or turn it over to Greg.
Yes, Councilwoman Staley.
First of all, I was in the pro shop this morning, signed up for junior golf, and I was blown away. It looks really nice in there, a big improvement. I haven't been in there probably in about a year, and so, it was just night and day difference, and you can really tell, so thank you very much for that. My question is, when we, we were talking about golf quite some time ago, and we had a lot of people that, that came in, and they, they made comments to the council, one of the things they talked about was in the summertime, extending the hours so they could play, you know, until it was dark or close to dark. Are they going to be able to do that now?
We're definitely going to do that, and we're going to start, let them start early, sunup to sundown, basically.
Great.
We're doing, and we're going to have specials even, that'd be in the evening, so it'd be less expensive for them to play, because, you know, when it gets really, really hot here, a lot of people don't want to come out and play, so we're going to try to encourage them to come out, and so, we'll have some special pricing that will end up getting people out later in the day. So, we're looking, and Greg's on board with doing all that, and he's excited about it as we are. So, I mean, we think it's important to get people out there. I mean, who doesn't want to play when it's a lot cooler in the morning? So, we're going to let them get out there, sunup. We're not, we're not going to keep them till seven or eight, six o'clock or whatever. It's four o'clock, and they want to get out there, we're going to let them get out there.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Well, first, I just wanted to say, before I got here, was driving, coming into the meeting, I wasn't driving, I was at home, I got a call from Patrick Moore, a friend of mine that was in the tournament, and had nothing but good things to say, so thank you for that. And then, just curious, does your, the pro, does he give lessons?
Sure. He does give lessons, he's very good at it. He's got a lot of great experience. I mean, we've really got lucky. I mean, he's, something else exciting to me about him is, he, for six, seven years, I believe it is, he was a writer for the PGA Magazine, PGA of America Magazine. So, while he was doing that, he was basically traveling the country, seeing a lot of really, really awesome places, a lot of awesome municipal golf courses, a lot of great private golf courses, but, so, I mean, he's got a lot of experience that he's going to be able to bring to us and really take, take us to the next level. I don't think there's any question about it, so.
We are glad you're in Kingman. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just a comment. Mike, the course is beautiful. In fact, when you come from downtown up on the freeway, you look over that beautiful, I mean, the course is just amazing right now. I wish we could have a course on the north side of the freeway, to me, because when people...
We'll see what we can do.
When people come into town, from, you know, when they're coming from downtown or from California, that's one of the first things they see when they get off the freeway. It's, it's beautiful, so.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just, I just want to tell you thank you, Mike. You're doing great work, appreciate all you do, and you're Johnny on the spot.
There's no I in team, though, it takes the whole effort, and I said that earlier. I mean, the pool maintenance guy did the bathroom vanity, so, I mean, it's our whole team stepping up, so.
Wonderful.
It's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Announcements by Mayor, city council members, or city manager, limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability and attendance at conferences and seminars. Manager Foggan, would you like, you don't want to talk. He wouldn't tell us if he had something. Councilman Watkins.
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Wade.
Yes, I attended the airport commission meeting, and I think I went over probably the most important part, was just about the leases and trying to get a fair amount to everybody. And also, I will be attending the Local First Economic Development Forum, August eighth at night, and I'll be speaking on public art and economic development.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilwoman Nelson.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for, sorry, Mr. Figg's last, last minute time, that was really interesting. So, thank you very much. I'm actually going to be visiting a planning and zoning event in a month, in the next week. So, Watkins will take them up, but someone's there will take, sit down, graduations around the world about, don't they, this time of year? So, and then, the other one will be, planning and zoning, we have a couple of things coming forward to us that I would like all of us to approach our planning and zoning commissioners and ask them to, one or two of them to attend. It's nice to hear from our staff, we need to hear from our staff, they, they keep us on a great narrow, but every once in a while, it really is nice to hear from one of our commissioners that are doing the same thing we're doing, only they're supposed to be in front of it for us, and they are in front of it for us. We've got a few things that are coming ahead of us, that literally, I can see that there's going to be certain questions. We're going to be looking at things, and we're going to be going against what they have to say, and I would actually like, very, very good for all of us, have them, and then sit in front of us, and when some of these difficult things come up, we actually hear, hey, this is why they're going to... I can share that with you as liaison, but it doesn't do a darn good or good until you have that person actually put it, it's just like one of us, we need to, we know why we did, we did, and we... We have a few things coming up like that, and I would be honored if you guys would kind of take that moment out of your schedule and just call me, Carrie, and ask for some more. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Nothing?
Thank you. I attended the KAMA meeting today, and they are, I think, kicking off a membership drive. I think they have about forty-four companies and people that are members right now, I think, is, is that about right? And they're looking to get some new blood and new, new people in there. So, if you're interested in KAMA and the industry and growing manufacturing and the jobs in our region, it's a great organization, and we'll just encourage you to get involved.
The only thing I would mention is our City Services Expo, and that is on May thirtieth, from four PM to seven PM, and is it in Lokomotive? At Lokomotive Park. This is going to be a real opportunity for anyone and all of us to learn about what's going on in all of our departments, because they'll all be represented. The city council, we will be, we will have a table there, and I think it'll just be a really wonderful time for, for anyone who wants to talk with us about what's going on in the city and how we serve the city, to find out some, to ask some questions and get some answers. So, please put that on your calendars. And so, with that, I think that ends our announcements, and we will go into council requests for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. Do we have any requests for work session agenda items at this time? Or calendar adjustments?
I would ask, I know it's, I think it would be a work, well, maybe not a work session, but I know that... but I know that we're going to be having a council commissions work session or workshop in...
In June.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
So that will be, that, that will need to be promoted, but that will be a time when the council and our commission, commissioners will have a chance to meet together and discuss our goals and aspirations for the city. I was, I didn't think it had, so.
Sorry, we're trying to, I'll speak for Mr. Foggan, we're trying to finalize a location and a date, and we'll let you guys know as soon as we have that.
Okay. Thank you. Next? Yes, sir.
You'd mentioned about bringing up a topic or something for future work sessions. Any thoughts from the council about, it seems like it's getting worse about people parking their cars in their front yards as opposed to using, maybe it's because they have multiple cars, but many cars, and clogging up their front yards, their front yard, it looks like a parking lot.
I know, I know exactly what you mean.
Just, you guys can't talk about it, so.
Correct.
We could request, we could request a work session on it, though.
You can.
And I think that's where the councilman is going. I think we'd like a work session on that. We've got it.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, then we will proceed to an executive session, which, do we need a motion to go into executive? Okay, let us have a motion to go into executive session to discuss and evaluate the city manager.
Motion for executive session?
I'll second that.
Motion is second to go into executive session, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'll just call this meeting back to order, and I would entertain a motion regarding the contract for city manager Foggan.
I would motion that we continue the contract as set with the increase that the city, all the city employers are going to receive with that same, at that same level.
Starting July 1st.
Starting, starting July 1st, this next fiscal year.
So there, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second to continue the city manager's contract with an increase in salary that matches that of the employees in the final budget that will become effective July 1st, 2019. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Manager Foggan, and I will go on record saying we really appreciate all the work you've done this past year. You've been an asset to this city, you're a great team leader, and we really appreciate having you here.
I love being here, and thank you, Mayor. It's been a pleasure. It really has.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion is second to adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Good night.